Noon. I would ask everyone to please, if you so desire, to stand and join us for a moment of silence or for personal prayer, and then after that, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty, justice, and Good afternoon, and welcome to our meeting for June 14th, 2022. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesdays at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 on the fourth Tuesday of each month, and then deviations from this schedule will be announced. Our meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast Friday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisor meetings can also be viewed online through Rona County's website at www.ronacountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or to attend Board of Supervisor meetings should contact the Clerk of Board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. And please turn off all cell phones or place them on silent. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. Norworth?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Item B on our agenda is request to postpone, add, or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone, add, or change anything on the agenda from the Board?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kaywood, I think you have a request.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on Section M of our meeting, closed meetings, we have four currently scheduled. I would recommend that the item currently listed is M2, which is appointment to the Water Authority Board be moved to item M4, and then our current item listed as M4, which is the evaluation of the county attorney be moved to M2. So just switch the order of those two items.
And I believe that one of the draft agendas that you've given to the Board has already renumbered.
Yes, I shared that by email with the Board, and I believe the materials you have have been ordered accordingly.
Mr. Lubek, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item C, Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Awards. We have a whole series of awards for Glenver High School, so I would ask Ms. Hooker to join me down at the podium, and we will work our way through all of these.
That's good, thank you.
Item C1 is a recognition congratulating Chase Miller, Glenver High School, for winning Virginia High School League Class II Championship in the 170-pound weight division in wrestling. Jason Murray? Mr. Murray, you're the Athletic Director, why don't you give a brief introduction and then say a few words about Mr. Miller?
I will. Coach Kline, I'm going to bring all of our coaches up. First of all, we'd like to thank, behalf of Glenver High School, we'd like to thank the Rona County Board of Supervisors for having us here today. We're super proud of all of these athletes. For most of them, they're multiple state winners, and for a few, this is their first time. But for Chase, he's a freshman, so we're super excited for him and his future career at Glenver High School. So I'll turn this over to Coach Kline, who's done a phenomenal job with our wrestling program. They're young, and we're super excited about the growth of that program, and hopefully we'll have a few more of those guys out here next year, so. Coach Kline?
Sure. Thank you all, thank you all for inviting us here today. Just want to say a few things about Chase. So Chase is a freshman wrestling 170 pounds, so he got to wrestle kids who were typically a lot older than him. He had a record of 36 and 2 as a freshman. He won a region title and then followed that up with a state championship at 170 pounds for Glenver, so outstanding season and congratulations.
Chase, would you like to say a few words? You don't have to, if you like, this is your opportunity, we're on cable TV.
He's made a few words.
I'll take the pressure off, Mr. Chairman, if I could say just a couple of words. My family knows Chase's family, my husband taught his parents in high school, and a little-known fact about Chase and his brother is that they're entrepreneurs, who knew? And they've got a wonderful hot dog stand, I would encourage you to go visit Champ's Hot Dogs, they just have a lot on the ball. And one of the great things that I love about the discipline and the work that it takes to be an outstanding athlete transfers directly to academics and to being inspired to be an entrepreneur and things such as that, so we're proud of you, Chase, good job.
Shall we take a picture? Why don't you? Do you want to read it, or do we have the Clerk read the recognition?
See this face? If you'll hold on just a second. Certificate of recognition presented to Chase Miller for winning the Virginia High School League Class II Championship in the 170-pound weight division in wrestling. Chase Miller is a freshman at Glenver, his overall record on the season was 36-2. Chase was undefeated in the postseason tournaments, winning Class II Region C Championship and the Class II State Championship at 170 pounds.
Thank you.
Yes, picture.
Our second recognition is to congratulate Delaney Eller, Carly Wilks, Adriana Hall, and Claire Griffith from Glenver High School for winning the Virginia High School League Class II Championship in the 200-yard freestyle relay. Come on up, please.
On behalf of the swim team, and Coach Hall, who cannot be here today as her relay partners, two of them are off at swim competitions as we speak, and one, Carly Wilks, who would be recognized with those ladies over there for outdoor and indoor track, she's at work and doesn't get off until 3:00, so I don't know if she'll come flying through that door any minute or not, but however, Delaney is here to represent that relay team. Coach Hall did write a few things, so I would just like to read those. The Glenver girls took a team of eight to the state championship swim meet in Richmond this past February. The girls placed fifth overall of over 30 teams and won two individual championships as well as a relay championship. Claire Griffith won the 50-yard freestyle event for the third consecutive year and also set a new class record at 24.33 seconds, breaking an old record of 24.48, set by former Glenver swimmer Reese Duncanberger last year. Claire also won the 100-yard freestyle after being the runner-up to Duncanberger the previous two years. The 200-yard freestyle relay team of Delaney Eller, Carly Wilks, Adriana Hall, and Griffith won the event pulling away from Nandua High School in the final 75 yards. So, and Claire could not be here, and I know that we're going to talk about several state title winners, and she is at least eight to 10, her dad may be able to speak more to that because he has a present, how many does she have, do you know? 10? So she's a 10-time
State champion.
Wow.
So, and then Delaney is going to be recognized with the track team, you are 14, 14-time state champion.
Let's get a picture, and do we want to read this one too?
Certainly. Certificate of recognition presented to Delaney Eller for winning the Virginia High School League Class II A Swimming Championship in the 200-yard freestyle relay.
We have Mr. Brent Hudson here from the School Board, and I neglected to bring you up the last time, is there anything else you would like to say?
I'm just very proud of Glenver as a whole and these young athletes, these ladies and gentlemen, the wrestlers, it's just amazing to be a part of such a great community and see you guys be so successful, not only academically, but in the sports, it's just amazing.
Ball squeezed. Item 3 on our agenda is a resolution congratulating the Glenver High School Girls Indoor Track and Field Team for winning the Virginia High School League VHL Class II Championship. Madam Clerk, why don't you read this resolution for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Resolution congratulating the Glenver High School Girls Indoor Track and Field Team for winning the Virginia High School League Class II Championship. Whereas athletic competitions are an important and integral part of the team curriculum at schools in Rona County, teaching cooperation, sportsmanship, teamwork, and athletic skill. And whereas on March 2nd and 3rd, 2022, the Glenver High School Girls Indoor Track and Field Team won the Virginia High School League Class 1-2 Combined Indoor State Championship at Liberty University by outscoring Appomattox High School 61 to 60. And whereas Senior Carly Wilks placed first in the 1,000 with a time of 30095, and first in the 1,600 with a time of 45978. Carly was also a member of the 4x400 team that took first overall. Reflecting on Carly's high school indoor career from 2018 to 2022 as a freshman, Carly competed in the 1,600, 3,200, and 4x800, placing second in all events. As a sophomore, Carly became the 1,600 and 3,200 state champion, along with the 4x800, taking first place that season. Moving forward to her junior and senior years, Carly understood that the 2021 and 22 season could bring great reward and decided to run the 1,000, 1,600, and 4x400 to compete for an overall team win. By doing this, Carly became a back-to-back state champion in the 1,000 and 4x400, and a three-time state champion in the 1,600. And whereas Senior Delaney Eller placed sixth in the 500D with a time of 12760, and was a member of the 4x400 state champion team. Over the past three seasons, Delaney has been a part of the 4x800 state championship team alongside of Carly and back-to-back 4x400 state champs. And whereas Junior Sydney Loder started the meet off by placing second in the high jump with a jump of 503. Sydney placed first in the 55H with a time of 9.08 and becoming a two-time state champion in this event. Sydney also placed first in the 300D with a time of 42.24. Sydney was a member of the 4x400 team that took first overall and became a back-to-back state champion in this event. And whereas Junior Adriana Hall was a member of the 4x400 state championship team alongside of Delaney Eller, Carly Wilks, and Sydney Loder with a time of 42060. And whereas the most exciting part of this whole meet came down to this one event, the 4x400, they needed to clinch first to win. This will be a moment they will all remember, it takes four to compete, and each of them competed at an outstanding level. And whereas Junior Molly McCroskey and sophomore Joanna Killeen were both able to experience their first state meet, competing in the 1,000. Both had personal bests, with Joanna placing 10th and Molly placing 11th overall. And whereas each of these young ladies are not only outstanding athletes, but excellent students, they represent their school and community, not only on the track but off as well. Their character poise, sportsmanship, and regard for others is what sets them apart. They are a true asset to Rona County, and our seniors will be greatly missed. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Rona County, Virginia, does hereby extend its sincere congratulations to the members of the Glenver High School Girls Indoor Track and Field Team, Carly Wilks, Delaney Eller, excuse me, Molly McCroskey, Joanna Killeen, Sydney Loder, and Adriana Hall, and be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors extends its best wishes to the members of the team, the coaches, and the school in their future endeavors.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Invite your athletes up, introduce them, say a few words about them.
Ladies, I'm going to bring the indoor assistant coach, our head coach, Coach Becca Loder could not be here today, so our assistant coach, Coach Madison Bourne, will say a few words about them and talk about those athletes.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Madison Bourne, I'm the assistant indoor track coach, and I'd like to introduce you to your 2022 1A, 2A Girls Indoor Track State Champions, also back-to-back state champions. We have two seniors, Carly Wilks, who's not here yet, and Delaney Eller, and we have three juniors, Sydney Loder, Molly McCroskey, and Adriana Hall, and one sophomore, Joanna Killeen. Three of these girls also participated in swimming at the same time and often went to practice and meet on the same day. This year, we did not come into the meet expecting another championship, but we knew it was a possibility. After the points we scored in the running infield defense, it came down to the 4x4 relay with Adri, Delaney, Carly, and Sydney. The girls were able to take first place to secure the win. We ended with a total of 61 points, with Appomattox right behind us at 60. All of these girls represent the best of Glenver and their character both on and off the track. We can always count on them to give 100% both in practice and at meets. We're so proud of these girls and what they have accomplished over the past few years. We will miss our seniors next year, and we can't wait to see what the future holds for Glenver Track. Thank you.
Any other comments?
So my only remaining comment, and I really hate that Carly Wilks is not here to join in this celebration, but, and it's been mentioned before, but just to reiterate again how proud we are of you, and the fact that this hard work really does directly translate to work in the classroom and working above and beyond in many areas of life, so we just congratulate you. For Carly Wilks, she was just named, I believe, last night as the Bene Barret Scholarship Award winner, which is really an incredible award for her also, so we're so proud of you all, thank you.
Just reiterate your comments, it's just so proud of you guys, so many multiple state champions, it's just unbelievable. I can't ever remember a time we've had so many, so very proud of you guys.
Would any of the athletes want to say anything? This is your chance, cable TV. Are you sure? Picture time. Our fourth and final resolution is a resolution congratulating Glenver High School Girls Outdoor Track and Field Team for winning Virginia High School League Class II Championship. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution.
Have the oxygen bottle. Resolution congratulating the Glenver High School Girls Outdoor Track and Field Team for winning the Virginia High School League Class II Championship. Whereas athletic competitions are an important and an integral part of the team curriculum at schools in Rona County, teaching cooperation, sportsmanship, teamwork, and athletic skill. And whereas on June 3rd and 4th, 2022, the Glenver High School Girls Indoor Track and Field Team won the Virginia High School League Class II Outdoor State Championship at James Madison University by outscoring Strathford High School 75 to 63. And whereas Senior Carly Wilks placed first in the 1,600 with a time of 44939, and first in the 800 with a time of 21762. Carly was also a member of the 4x400 team that took first overall. Reflecting on Carly's high school outdoor career from 2019 to 2022 as a freshman, Carly competed in the 3,200 and placing third in this event. As a sophomore, Carly's season was cut short due to the season being canceled because of COVID. Moving forward to her junior and senior years, Carly understood that the 2021 and 2022 season could bring great reward and decided to run the 800, 1,600, and 4x400 to compete for an overall team win. By doing this, Carly became a back-to-back state champion in these events. And whereas Senior Delaney Eller placed sixth in the 400 meter with a time of 10316, and was a member of the 4x400 state championship team. Over the past two seasons, Delaney has been a part of the back-to-back 4x400 state championship relay team. And whereas Sydney Loder started the meet off by placing second in the high jump with a jump of 502, Sydney placed first in the 100 hurdles with a time of 1537, and becoming a two-time state champion in this event. Sydney also placed first in the 300 hurdles with a time of 4667, and becoming a two-state champion in this event as well. Sydney was a member of the 4x400 team that took first overall and became a back-to-back state champion in this event. And whereas Junior Ryan Harris was seventh in the state for pole vault and a member of the 4x400 state championship team alongside of Delaney Eller, Carly Wilks, and Sydney Loder with a time of 41323. And whereas freshman Marie Swanson, Junior Brooklyn Woolwine, Junior Adriana Hall, and Junior Ryan Harris were fifth in the state for the 4x100 relay. And whereas Junior Molly McCroskey, Junior Kiana Nguyen, sophomore Emma Pope, and sophomore Joanna Killeen were members of the 4x800 relay team that placed sixth overall in the state. And whereas each of these young ladies are not only outstanding athletes, but excellent students, they represent their school and community, not only on the track but off as well. Their character poise, sportsmanship, and regard for others is what sets them apart. They are a true asset to Rona County, and our seniors will be greatly missed. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Rona County, Virginia, does hereby extend its sincere congratulation to the members of the 2022 Glenver High School Girls Outdoor Track and Field Team, Carly Wilks, Delaney Eller, Molly McCroskey, Joanna Killeen, Sydney Loder, Adriana Hall, Ryan Harris,
Kiana Nguyen.
Kiana Nguyen, Marie Swanson, Brooklyn Woolwine, Emma Pope, Kiana Nguyen, and Lauren Michaels, and be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors extends its best wishes to the members of the team, the coaches, and the school in their future endeavors. I believe we missed somebody, how do you pronounce that?
Marie Swanson?
No, after Ryan Harris?
Maya Gentry.
Maya Gentry.
Motion to adopt the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the resolution.
Have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Please invite the student athletes up.
There'll be some repeats and some new faces. I'm also going to bring up head coach Neil Swanson, and not with us today is our other head coach, because in outdoor track, you have a girls' head coach and a boys' head coach, Amanda Spradlin, she's not here today, so, Mr. Swanson.
Please say, speak.
All right, thank you very much for recognizing these young ladies, for their hard work, their dedication, their commitment to the school, the program, and for their success. As a coach, they make it easy, I'm very, I'm very proud of these young ladies, I mean, there's nothing I could say that would, you know, that would just tell me or tell you guys about how proud I am of them for their hard work and dedication, because winning back-to-back is not easy, it's tough, they commit a lot of time to practice, and when they go out there to the meets themselves, they are, I mean, they just rise to the occasion, and it's always fun to watch, and it's always fun to be a part of. What makes Glenver such a special community is the fact that these young ladies, you know, most of them are already committed to other sports and other programs. When you look at, you know, the individual state championships along with the team, Delaney Eller has 14, Brooklyn Woolwine has two, Kiana Nguyen has two, Molly McCroskey has three, Joanna has three, Emma Pope has two, Ryan has six, Sydney Loder has 16, Carly Wilks has 26, Adriana Hall has eight, okay? When you look at this, and this shows you what a special community Glenver is, we share athletes, we work together, and we have fun doing it, and I'm proud of these kids, and I'm proud of you guys for recognizing the Glenver program, and thank you so much for allowing these people to have their chance to have their moment in the spotlight, which is really, really important, not just to us, but the Glenver community, so thank you.
Thank you, Coach Swanson, for all that you did, for all the coaches who have taken good care of our athletes, and for representing Rona County so well. One last thing, I mean, it feels like we're saying kind of the same thing over and over, but you all really persevered, this is the last sport of the year, I guess, and you excelled the whole year and years prior, so we really congratulate you and wish you the very best in all your successes going forward.
Congratulations, ladies, and I'd like to say, I had the opportunity to coach with Mr. Swanson here, and he is a great representation in the Glenver community, absolutely love him, he's also a veteran of Armed Forces, thank you for your service, and just everything you do for the community, this guy coaches multiple sports, he's one of the guys that you can go up at Glenver anytime, and I guarantee you, you're going to see his truck up there. He puts in a lot of time, and thank you for what you do, I really look up to you for what you do for all of our kids, and I hope you're going to be there in about six years when my kids get back, because
More than likely.
I want you to rub off on them, so thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Ready for a picture?
Last opportunity, anyone wants to speak, you can get, come up here, you can speak, get on camera, come on, all of you can't be shy.
Trust me, when I see these ladies, they talk alive, and now all of a sudden, now all of a sudden, the bus ride homes are really, really fun to listen to them all, but right now, the plan looks tight.
All right. Come on, someone step up. Picture time. Don't you get in here.
Thank you. Congratulations, ladies.
Great place.
Have a great summer.
Good job, Coach.
Yeah, good job, Coach.
Good job.
Yes.
How do we finish with the Glenver show?
Shall we adjourn?
Hey, we get to do it again. They want a tennis thing too, so.
We've got two more coming.
Oh, Martha.
Soccer and tennis.
I think we need to challenge all the other high schools.
Let's, we'll lay down that gauntlet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now you can hear.
Item D on our agenda is public hearing and adoption of resolution. Item D1 is a resolution approving the secondary six-year improvement plan for fiscal years 2023 through 2028, and construction priority list, and estimated allocations for fiscal year 2023. Ms. Cronis.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We come to you every year to talk about the Secondary Road Six-Year Improvement Plan, so we are back again this year. The county receives about $350,000 per year for projects on secondary roads which are route numbers 600 and higher. We have two different sources that this funding comes from. Telefee, which is generated from telecommunications providers paying a public rights-of-way use fee, as well as district grant unpaved funds for paving eligible VDOT-maintained unpaved roads. There's $349,323 allocated for fiscal year 2023, and is proposed to continue to fund Dry Hollow Road, Starkey Road, Buck Mountain Road intersection improvements, Ivy Ridge Road paving, Webb Road paving, and countywide traffic engineering and survey services. And we'll talk about those more in some detail moving on. There's also $500,000 proposed to improve Timberview Road in fiscal years 2026 through 2028, and there's $23,006 reserved in unallocated telefee funds to leverage future applications to fund existing deficits or to fund new projects. There's $196,072 available for district grant unpaid roads. So, this list follows the budget report in your packet. Projects with zero numbers means that they are completed, so we have several of those review with you today, some of which were on the list last year. So, Moncap Trail is a VDOT-maintained unpaid road off of Corn Tassel Lane, which was reconstructed and paved with a turnaround. The total project funding was $200,000, and it was completed in 2021, just after we spoke with you last year. Fall Water Lane Extension, we've talked about a lot. This project is to upgrade the existing private road to public road standards and connect a Chevy road. The total project funding is $4.3 million through secondary six-year plan and revenue sharing. This construction is underway with completion anticipated in August of 2022. Harmony Lane is next. This is a rural addition project off of Route 221 Bent Mountain Road, which upgraded a private road to public road standards, including building a turnaround. The total project funding was $207,000, and this was completed in 2021. Crowell Gap Road was just completed as well. This is a project to pave a 300-foot-long segment of Crowell Gap from the end of the existing paving to the last driveway before the Franklin County line, and this was completed in May of 2022. Project number one is Dry Hollow Road. We've talked about this one a good bit too. This project is to improve safety by widening the roadway under the railroad bridge near the intersection with West River Road. Phase one construction is anticipated this year, and total project funding is now $4.6 million with secondary six-year plan and revenue sharing funding. Project two is Starkey Road Buck Mountain Road Intersection Improvements. This is to convert the existing T intersection to a roundabout. The right-of-way phase is concluding, and the total project funding is $5.8 million with a number of funding sources on it. Construction is anticipated to begin in early 2023 with construction advertisement this October, so we're thrilled to get that project moving. Franklin Street is next. We added this project last year. This is to improve the existing roadway with minor widening and plant-mixed asphalt. The estimate's $350,000, and construction is anticipated in fiscal year 2024. Number four is new, Timberview Road. This is a proposed addition. Improvements requested by residents could include pavement and shoulder widening at critical locations, lengthening certain drainage culverts, and spot improvements for $500,000, and construction is anticipated in fiscal year 2027. We'll continue working on scoping that project when there's funding on the project. Ivy Ridge Road is a VDOT-maintained unpaid road off of Route 221 Bent Mountain Road to be paved with a cul-de-sac. Total project funding is $200,000, and construction is anticipated in fiscal year 2023. Webb Road is a VDOT-maintained unpaid road off of Route 220 Franklin Road to be paved. Total project funding is $250,000, and construction is anticipated in fiscal year 2025. And Bergen Blick Lane is a VDOT-maintained unpaid road as well, off of Old Mill Road to be paved with a cul-de-sac constructed for $200,000 with construction anticipated in fiscal year 2027. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of Ms. Cronis?
No questions.
Mr. Blevins is here from VDOT. Brian, any questions for him? Thank you, Megan. With that, I will open the public hearing. Want to remind any speakers that we would ask you to give us your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. I have no speech request. Madam Clerk has none?
No, sir. I don't have any either.
Please, come up.
Hello. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Holly Delaney. I live at 2702 White Pelican Lane, and a resident there for 15 years. And I'm here to raise a concern about a residence that was just sold just two houses away from me at 2714 White Pelican Lane. I also have some neighbors the same row as we brought my neighbors. Basically, the property was sold April 6 to a company called FCIO OTO Properties LLC. It's a healthcare realty company, which a neighbor walking by, Denise, had talked to one of the workers working on the property, and he let her know, he's from Pinnacle, and they are making this property to be a, basically, after men's recovery from drug addiction, right in our street, and it's in Penforest neighborhood. Penforest is right down the street. There's children on both sides. So, one of my neighbors, John Conti, looked up the zoning, and we are in the R1, and they're allowed to have a residential human care facility, but that does not include drugs or alcohol under that. I reached out to Rebecca James this morning, left her a voicemail. She quickly sent out Bill Richardson to investigate. And he said that they had not pulled a license yet. It's been two months. And in order for them to change that zoning, they'd have to let all the neighbors know in order to change the zoning to fit their needs. We have not heard anything. And so, I sent her an email with all these concerns, and also sent David Sulerlin an email. I'm friends with him, and he goes to Richmond and might be able to help us out if, you know, nothing happens, but. I don't think we would have even found out about it if my neighbor just didn't stop and ask questions, because they were falsely putting this residence under something else that it's not going to be. Do you have any things for me to?
No, let me say a couple of things. I'm sorry, maybe I confused you. This is a public hearing on funding for the Secondary Road Six-Year Plan.
Oh.
Your comments are appropriate, it's just they should have been provided at another point in our agenda. But I didn't want to interrupt you, no, I didn't want to interrupt you because I figure we should go ahead and listen to your comments. I have spoken to several citizens on White Pelican. I have spoken to the zoning administrator. She has sent out some of zoning enforcement staff, Mr. Richardson. We are looking into that. There are some, there are several state agencies that are involved. We have to coordinate with them, and county staff are in the process of looking at what is occurring there, because there were several different citizen complaints that I had received. I think I spoke to Mr. Mitchell, I spoke to Mr. Byrd, spoke to several folks, and so we are looking into it, and county staff is right on top of it, and we'll try to get back to you as soon as we get some better information.
Okay. Is there anything else that we need to do?
Not at this time. Let us do our analysis, let us do our research, and we'll get back to the citizens in White Pelican as soon as we have some good information.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, no, no problem.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Any other speakers with respect to the Secondary Six-Year Improvement Plan? If not, I will close the public hearing. I would like a motion to approve the draft resolution that is in our agenda with respect to item D1.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item D1.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item E is First Reading of Ordinances. Item E1 is an ordinance accepting and appropriating $200,000 from the Virginia Tourism Corporation for the purpose of tourism marketing through Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge. Mr. Blunt?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. In 2021, the American Rescue Act Tourism Recovery Program was established by the Virginia General Assembly to provide $50 million in recovery funds to the Virginia Tourism Corporation and allocate those funds to destination marketing organizations. The purpose of the funding is to help with financial recovery of many of the tourism businesses across the Commonwealth that was affected negatively by COVID-19. Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge is the official destination marketing organization for our region, including the counties of Roanoke, Bodatot, and Franklin, and the cities of Roanoke and Salem. Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge is responsible for the development and marketing of our regional consumer brand. The ARPA Tourism Recovery Program will provide recovery funds to all 133 Virginia counties and independent cities. Tourism generated nearly $1 billion in Virginia state tax revenues in 2019. Every locality will get a set allocation. These funds are not competitive, so no match is required. Available funds have been allocated based on the relative share of each locality to total state sales tax revenue to tourism in 2019, based on VTC's annual economic impact of visitors in Virginia report issued by the U.S. Travel Association. Roanoke County's portion of the VTC funds is $200,000. Upon approval of the marketing plan by VTC, Roanoke County will be sent $100,000, and then, once that money has been spent, Roanoke County will then seek reimbursement from VTC for the next $100,000 in VBR expenditures. These funds must be used for tourism marketing and development, including media buys, advertising, public relations, sales, and product development. Funds may not be used for any expenses that are not related to tourism marketing and development. Roanoke County must commit to spending all funds and submit the appropriate reporting documents by December 31, 2023. Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge will incur the marketing plan cost upfront, and Roanoke County will reimburse them for approved expenses. VBR will use the allocated funds to promote Roanoke County through the county's tourism assets, including Explorer Park, mountain biking breweries, restaurants, and various events such as sports tournaments and Illuminites, and ultimately generating more overnight stays for our local hotels. Roanoke County's many outdoor assets will be promoted as well, including Blue Ridge Parkway, Appalachian Trail, Dixie Caverns, Roanoke River Blue Way, Greenways, and retail shops such as our bike shops. The key objective of all Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge programs is to ultimately stimulate the economy by increasing visitation, increasing length of stay, and most importantly, generating revenues for our businesses in Virginia's Blue Ridge. This program includes a significant investment in paid marketing campaigns through social media and advertising, and especially Google Pay per Click. Additionally, VBR will incorporate a strategic automated email marketing campaign that connects with a consumer database of potential travelers and offers relevant content and stories based off of their interest in the region, and ultimately helping them to convert into visitors. YouTube advertising is also another key component to this plan since it allows VBR to provide video content and stories or suggest trips that highlight individual industry partners that might not be able to promote themselves otherwise. Staff recommends approval of the first reading and setting the second reading for June 28. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Also in attendance today is Landon Howard, President of Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, and he would be available for any comments as well as if the board has questions for him.
Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Doug. And Landon, it's good to see you here today as well. While I have no issue with what's being asked, you know, what's proposed today, my question is, you know, Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, which we've all been an adamant supporter of for a number of years, how difficult is it going to be to cut out Roanoke County and promote Roanoke County when we work through Virginia, Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge as a region? And I guess to go a little deeper in that, would we not be able to use the money from, I'm assuming Roanoke City's getting this, Roanoke County, Bodatot, everyone who's involved in it, can they not still just promote what we're doing rather than having to segregate Roanoke County or Roanoke City or Bodatot, whoever out of there? I guess what you just said to us sounded like they're going to do our Explorer Park, our Illuminites, but I guess I'm asking back to where a lot of us feel for regional look. Can we not continue to do what we're doing, just have the additional funds to do that?
The answer is yes to all, and I'll explain why. Yes, VBR is developing an overall marketing plan for all of the different jurisdictions that are receiving ARPA funds. Out of each one of those areas, though, there will be specific things that will be promoted just like VBR does now.
Let me clarify, that's my question. So, we're having to do it for each jurisdiction?
Yes, because each jurisdiction was provided funds. Now, they've developing an overall marketing plan that, and I attached it as a part of the, as a part of your board report, that has similar characteristics for each of the different jurisdictions, but for example, you know, one jurisdiction may have something specific that they want to promote, maybe their antique shops, you know, that's very important to their overall business. Another may be that they really want to promote the Blue Ways because of the many Blue Ways options that they have for people being able to get on different rivers and paddle. And so, much of what Virginia's Blue Ridge does is, within their marketing, is they cover, you know, the entire area, but they also promote individual businesses, like for example, you know, at Christmas time. Illuminites was a major part of their Christmas time marketing because it was one of the major events that took place, and they were able to use to be able to draw people in. So, certainly, they are going to continue to promote the entire region, and they will use many of their outdoor brands that they've established. You know, certainly, you've seen all of the videos that have the mountain biking and McAfee's Knob and such, and that they will continue to do, but then they will also be able to tailor for each jurisdiction much of that advertising into individuals to promote our local hotels. And that's the one that's personally important to me, is, you know, many of our hotels were affected in COVID-19 with the lack of visitors, so now being able to bring in, you know, additional sports tournaments, bring in other users for other type of events will help to be able to fill the hotels, as well as be able to, you know, people to stay and spend money at restaurants and local businesses.
Thank you.
Mr. Radford?
Doug, thank you.
Doug, thank you for presenting this to Landon. Good to see you all. So I think I heard you say they were going to spend $100,000 first and then get reimbursed. Explain that in a little more detail to me.
So the way that VTC set up the program is whatever your allocation is, once VTC approves the marketing plan, they will send you a funds transfer for the first half of your allocation. So for Roanoke County, it's $100,000.
Okay.
We will then turn around and have to submit through a web portal all of the receipts that we reimburse Virginia's Blue Ridge for for many of these different marketing opportunities. Once we get to the $100,000 mark, then we start submitting the next $100,000, and VTC will then send Roanoke County a check for each of those reimbursements. So basically, you're getting half of the money upfront, and then they're going to reimburse you for the second half of your allocation.
Okay, so we're spending our money first to get it back. So you have that stashed somewhere?
Actually, no. We will get $100,000 upfront from VTC.
Okay, okay.
Then, yes, then on the back half, we're spending Roanoke County money, and then we're getting reimbursed from VTC.
Okay.
Then we're reimbursing VBR. So basically, we're the pass-through for this ARPA funding, and it's set up like that for each jurisdiction in the Commonwealth.
Okay.
Or we could just use all of Landon's money and then worry about it on the backside.
Any other questions? Landon, would you like to say anything?
I always like to say something.
Oh, I made a mistake.
Oh, yeah. It won't take too long.
First of all, we're elated to be able to be out of the pandemic and moving to recovery. And we're grateful to each of you for your support as we put marketing plans into place to get us back where we need to be. And it's really coming back quickly. Probably the only negative thing is those gas prices. But we have a lot of our customers that come in from Raleigh and Richmond and DC, and instead of them going to Florida, maybe they come to us. And so it's really appreciate Richard Kaywood and Doug Blunt and working with us and have a great partnership. And the most important thing is for us to continue being successful. So thank you very much. I'd be happy to take any questions I have.
I have a question, Landon. In view of the inflation across hotels, airlines, and such, what about media advertising? Can you comment on how that is in the marketplace today? Has it been significantly increased over year over year?
Yes. I mean, what's happening is is all prices are going up in both media and everything that we do. But we just... What we have to do is be smarter about content marketing. And we've got some great team that we work with. And right now, our numbers, we're averaging 5,400 new customers per day to our website. The people have never shopped us before. And the sporting... Sports groups are going through the roof in terms of our, you know, what we're seeing, leisure and outdoor groups or individuals have been doing great. About the only thing we see lagging a little bit is the business, the commercial. But that's coming back as well, as well as conventions. So we stand in a good position. And especially as people learn more and more about us as a result of some of the events that we've hosted recently, too. Thank you.
With that, I would seek a motion to approve the first reading of item E1 and to schedule the second reading for June 28.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve item E1. First reading scheduled, second reading for June 28, 2022.
Second by Mr. Peters. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Item E2 is an ordinance increasing the salaries of the members of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County pursuant to Section 3.07 of the Roanoke County Charter and Section 15.2-14, 14.3 of the Code of Virginia. Mr. Lubeck?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Section 15.2, 14, 14.3 of the Code of Virginia and Section 3.07 of the County Charter set forth the authority by which the salaries of the members of the Board of Supervisors may be increased. And these authorities require that any increase in the supervisor's salaries be accomplished by ordinance after a public hearing between May 1 and June 30. And any increase is limited to an annual 5% inflation factor. The Board recently approved the adoption of a budget which grants a 5% salary increase to non-public safety county employees and different increases in salaries to public safety employees. In the past, the Board has routinely increased its salary by the same percentage awarded to county employees. The proposed ordinance that is before you today would increase the board member's salaries by the 5% inflation factor in accordance with Section 15.2 hyphen 14, 14.3. And it is proposed that a public hearing and a second reading be held on this ordinance on June 28 of 2022. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have today.
Any questions for Mr. Lubeck?
When's the last time this came up? Was it two years ago?
It was last year, sir.
If there are no further questions, I would move the approval of item E2 and request that we schedule the second reading and public hearing for June 28, 2022. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
No.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lubeck.
Thank you, sir.
Item F1, a public hearing. Public hearing to receive citizen comments regarding a proposed amendment to fiscal year 2021-2022 budget in accordance with Code of Virginia, Section 15, 2, 2507. Ms. Gerhardt?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This item is to conduct a public hearing for citizen comments amending the fiscal year 21, 22 budget by adjusting the aggregate amount to be appropriated during the fiscal year by $9,147,263 to the Roanoke County Grant Fund. Section 15.2-2507 of the Code of Virginia, as amended, provides that wherever such amendment exceeds 1% of the total expenditure shown in the adopted budget, the county must publish notice of a meeting and public hearing. The notice must state the county's intent to amend the budget and include a brief synopsis of the proposed budget amendments. The notice was published on June 7, 2022. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing to receive citizen comments.
Any questions for Ms. Gerhardt? This is to accommodate the second tranche of the ARPA funds. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I would open the public hearing for any comments from citizens. Madam Clerk, do you have?
Yes, sir.
Do I have any citizens who want to speak? I see none. With that, I will close the public hearing. Item G1, second reading of ordinances. This is an ordinance accepting and appropriating funds in the amount of $9,147,263 from the Department of Treasury for the locality-based allocation distributed as a component of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Ms. Gerhardt?
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is the second reading for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, also known as ARPA, funds, which provides funding to continue to address the COVID-19 pandemic. As a recap from the first reading, the county received the first allocation on May 19, 2021 in the amount of $9,147,263. This was accepted and appropriated by the Board at the October 19, 2021 meeting. This ordinance is for the second allocation, which has been received since the first reading held on May 24. These funds were received in the amount of $9,147,263 on June 9. Attachment A in the packet outlines the current projects and projected costs for our total allocation of $18,294,526, which includes funding for broadband projects, cybersecurity upgrades, heavy equipment, water and sewer needs, stormwater, mental health initiatives, and other various qualifying projects. Staff recommends approval of the second reading of the ordinance to accept and appropriate the second allocation of $9,147,263 in the Roanoke County Grant Fund.
Are there any questions for Ms. Gerhardt? Seeing none, I would welcome a motion to adopt ordinance G1. Mr. Peters?
And second.
Second by Ms. Hooker. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item G2, ordinance authorizing granting of a public utility easements to the Western Virginia Water Authority on property owned by Roanoke County Board of Supervisors. We list a whole bunch of tax map numbers that I won't read. Located at 1204, 1206, and 1216 Kessler Mill Road. Mr. Blunt?
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The request from the Western Virginia Water Authority is for two easements. The first easement is 20 feet in width and then an additional 10-foot temporary construction easement. These easements will traverse the Public Service Center property out to Kessler Mill Road. And then, there's been a second variable width easement along Kessler Mill Road that's been requested. The first easement is for 13,007 square feet. The second easement is for 1,597 square feet. And this is for the purpose of extending the North Water main loop from Thompson Memorial Boulevard to Kessler Mill Road. And this is to be able to increase their water capacity to customers. There have been no changes since first reading. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Blunt? When... Do you have an estimate of when WVWA may begin construction?
In my last conversation with them two weeks ago, they would like to begin this project this summer. They have the... This was actually in their FY22 budget. And so they are ready to move on. They've already bid the work, and they would like to be able to begin immobilizing later this summer. So at that time, we will start coordinating the appropriate parties because there will be some temporary impacts to the Public Service Center for access, as well as the Hanging Rock Greenway. And so we will have to do some public notification as well as working out how we will access the Public Service Center while they are getting to the point of actually crossing the entrance road where the water line will be installed.
Thank you. I would welcome a motion to adopt ordinance G2.
Mr. Chairman, this is in the Catawba District, and so I ask for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item G3, this is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition permanent easement for Long Ridge Trail on property located off 12 o'clock Knob Road in the Windsor Hills Magisterial District. Ms. Webb?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you today for your time. There have been no changes since the first reading of this ordinance on May 24. This is a proposal to authorize the acquisition of a donated permanent easement for the future Long Ridge Trail, which is identified in the Roanoke Valley Greenway Plan as a connection between Poor Mountain Preserve and Happy Hollow Gardens here in Roanoke County. There have been no substantive changes since the first reading. There have been... The plat has been updated and sealed and finalized. That was done internally with Roanoke County staff. And there has been a minor revision to the deed that was requested by the property owners. But otherwise, there have been no substantive changes. And I will recognize Mrs. Liz Belcher, who is the former Roanoke Valley Greenway Coordinator and is also serving as the crew leader for the Pathfinders for Greenways, who we would look to to build this trail in the future and help maintain it for us. So otherwise, I have no other comments to make. So if you have any questions or concerns, I'll be happy to take them.
Any questions, Ms. Webb? If not, I would welcome a motion to approve G3. Mr. Chairman, I approve item... Move motion to approve item G3. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item H is appointments. Does any board member have an appointment that has not been submitted to the clerk? If not, we will go to item I, consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve? Well, does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent?
Motion to adopt.
I will second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Citizen comments and communications. I don't see any citizens beating down our door to speak to us today. Reports, I would ask a motion to receive and file the three reports that are listed in our agenda. Second. Madam Clerk, I'll make the motion. We'll have a second.
I thought he said motion.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Rad... North?
Glunver's made us punch this today.
I know.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item L, reports and inquiries of board members. First up is Ms. Hooker.
You know, because I haven't had enough time yet to talk about the Glunver accolades, I wanted to spend a quick second summarizing because it really has been just an incredible year. And in cross-country, Carly Wilks and Daniel Zerfoss volleyball, the team volleyball won state championship. Girls swim team, multiple girls. Wrestling, Chase Miller. Girls indoor track. And then we have girls tennis and girls soccer that we still need to recognize. Girls outdoor track. And I just want to mention, too, that boys soccer, they were the runner-ups on Saturday. So it was just a phenomenal year, and I am really proud of what our students have accomplished. Tomorrow, I look forward to meeting with the Catawba Hospital stakeholders to discuss the future possibilities of including substance abuse treatment so that the hospital can continue to serve our citizens with high-quality care and expanded services. So I'm looking forward to that conversation. And I believe Mr. North will be joining me there also. Today, was able to attend the jailer and law enforcement graduation. Roanoke County graduated five men and women who have been highly trained. And we appreciate these individuals and their willingness to serve our community. And it was after casual conversation at the end of the ceremony, we're aware that there's opportunities for careers there for anyone who may be interested in applying anyone who may be interested in applying and looking on their website to see how to learn more information about working at the regional jail. There was a comment that was brought up to me by a citizen just in the audience today. And after our, we've reworked with redistricting, and some of our precincts have moved, and there was a substantial move with the Catawba precinct going down to Mason's Cove now, which is a substantial move for some citizens. And it was an interesting question that I wanted to run by staff and have it on the record, that there was an interest in studying the shuttle bus, if there is any way that on Election Day, we could potentially use that to bring citizens from the Catawba Valley down to Mason's Cove, maybe on a rotating basis on an election day. I think it would really help some of the elderly population, and especially with that distance in mind. Just something for discussion, and I'd appreciate some feedback on that at some point. And then I'll just throw it out there for my peers to discuss further, but Ironman was such a success and definitely worth some of the traffic impediments. But what a great day, and I'm really proud of the Valley for all that went on with that and Roanoke County's part. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Mr. North?
Mr. Chair, a couple of comments. First of all, today's Flag Day, so let's remember the red, white, and blue flag applies over all municipal buildings, state buildings, and federal buildings. Yesterday was also Election Day five years ago when I was anointed to be the Republican nomination for the Board of Supervisors. So that popped up yesterday in my memories on Facebook. I want to encourage folks that can vote on the 21st of, I think it's the 21st, one week from today, you can continue to vote early, either by mail or else, in person Saturday and during the week at either Vinton or Brambleton. I know last week, the vote tally was very weak, if you could say that. Two people voted in Vinton in person on last Saturday, and nobody voted in Brambleton. So if you haven't voted yet, there is an election in some districts next Tuesday. Also, the General Assembly, I'm told by Virginia County's Jeremy Bennett, will go into session this Friday to address last few items of the budget. Hopefully, they'll pass the budget, of which there are three buckets of potential aid for schools. And I encourage our school board and staff to begin to study those. If they are passed, there will be new rules of engagement and guidelines adopted by the Department of Education. Number one, there's a direct aid school construction assistance program for $450 million. There's a direct aid school construction grant program for $401 million, of which $1 million, I'm told, will go to each school division in the Commonwealth, can be used to pay for debt service on projects that have been completed or initiated in the last 10 years. There's also a $400 million pot in the literary fund, which has been redefined in $200 billion each of the next two years of the biennial budget. That's a total of $1.251 billion, which is spectacular. And I want to thank Elegant Ho Quinn of Bristol, as well as Majority Leader Kilgore for their efforts, as well as the Budget Committee for making these items possible to schools all over the Commonwealth. And I do hope that Roanoke County can be a beneficiary of some of this muddies in the future. With that said, tomorrow, I also will join Supervisor Hooker as the chairman of the Allegedly Regional Commission and others over at Catawba Hospital to discuss the fact that that hospital got $750,000, I think, in the budget that's to be approved to study adding on an additional facility over there for substance abuse. And so we'll look forward to that tomorrow. And also, on July 13, we'll be touring a number of transportation projects with the Commonwealth Transportation Board around the county. Supervisor Radford and myself, look forward to that. Thank you.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, I would like to congratulate the Hidden Valley Women's Soccer Team for their run through the state tournament. They ended up the runner-up this year. Congratulations to their coach, Cory Carroll. They ended up playing Lafayette High School in the final over in Cortland. They were playing over there while the Cave Spring Men's Soccer Team was in their semifinals over there. So we've had a couple of county teams up in Northern Virginia last weekend. Also, would like to summarize last week. I attended a broadband announcement up at the Benton Mountain Community Center. Cox Communication was highlighting broadband expansion through their fiber infrastructure, adding a total of 109 homes. They were kicking off the first 49 of that 109. While we were there, they were gracious enough, Cox was gracious enough, to give the Benton Mountain Community Center a year of comp internet service, broadband service up at their community center, which was very appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to Glunver. We do have four other high schools in Roanoke County. I hope to see some of them before us, not to mention Weber. Anyway, so the only other thing that I need to mention today is that on June 30, we will be having a community meeting for the East Roanoke River Greenway that will go from the Western Virginia Water Authority Pollution Center, Pollution Control Plant, to the Blue Ridge Parkway. That'll help create that last leg that can get us over to Explore Park. That will be on June 30. From 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., it'll be an open-style meeting, as we've had multiple times before with transportation and what have you. And this will be at the Explore Party Visitors Center, again, June 30 from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So I know there's a lot of people wanting to weigh in on that. I believe there's also a site on, excuse me, a link on our website that you can also comment on. So I look forward to hearing from our citizens on that. With that, that's all I have.
I have five items. First of all, I want to thank Vice Chairman Peters for sitting in for me last meeting. I did have to miss the meeting because I had COVID, and I hope I didn't infect anyone. So I think everybody survived. I do want to thank Captain Mock. He was very helpful. He got me the PCR test right away and gave me some advice as to what to do and what not to do. Next, on June 3, I was able to zoom in and attend on behalf of the county Board of Directors meeting of the Roanoke Regional Partnership. They had their semi-annual meeting then. Unfortunately, they did not have a full quorum, so they couldn't adopt their bylaw amendments and things like that. So they're going to have to do that again. I thought Mr. Peters was going to mention, on June 7, we were at the town of Vinton, when the town of Vinton was turning over their water and sewer system to the Western Virginia Water Authority. And county, key county staff also attended. It was a very nice, very nice event, very nice ceremony that they had. That evening, Mr. Blunt and I were able to attend the Sister Cities Dinner and Annual Meeting. Mr. Blunt was given the resolution that was adopted by the Virginia General Assembly. It was recognizing, Mr. Blunt's coming up, recognizing a Revolutionary War Polish general who came and helped George Washington, General Thaddeus Kasikusko, I'm sorry. Even though my wife is half Polish and I have Polish in my blood, this was a very nice resolution, and it was adopted by the Virginia General Assembly.
Do we need your clerk to read it?
I think that'd be a great idea. And you will notice, we were also, they took a picture of us at the dinner. And Dr. Christina Sowakowski was there. She has been very active in Sister Cities, and our sister city is Opola, Poli in Poland. And the gentleman on the right, Robert Jaskowiak, he is the Honorary Counsel of the Republic of Poland in Virginia, and he gave a little speech. And it was a very nice event. It was at Center and Square. And so Mr. Blunt and I were representing Roanoke County very ably and very well at that event. And then, as Supervisor Hooker mentioned, this morning, we did attend the basic jailer graduation. And we, both of us are on the board for the Regional Jail Authority along with Ms. Owens. They're down, they're down jailers. They need people, just like police officers. Chief Hall, he's down officers. I think Sheriff Orange is probably doing pretty good. But I think all of our public safety folks are down the number of key staff. And so if we could encourage any citizen who's interested in a career in law enforcement, there are definitely openings, and we do have a very serious need to address that. But with that, I would ask, Mr. Lubek, we have four closed meetings. Should I read out each and have a separate vote on each of the four, or could I read all four at once and have one vote for all of them? What would you recommend?
I think it would be fine to have one vote for all of them. I would also recommend that you announce the work session prior to convening a closed session.
Yes, we do have, we do have a work session.
Yes, sir.
To discuss debt financing for capital projects with the board. That is going to be up on the third floor. Where should we do the closed sessions?
Third floor.
Third floor?
Third floor.
Okay. Okay, item M1. Let's move to go into closed session pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 2.23711A19. Discussion of plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activity or specific cybersecurity threats or vulnerabilities, and briefings by staff members, legal counsel, or law enforcement or emergency service officials concerning actions taken to respond to such matters, or a related threat to public safety. Discussion of information subject to the exclusion in subdivision 2 or 14 of Section 2.23705.2, where discussion in open meeting would jeopardize the safety of any person, or the security of any facility, building, structure, information technology system, or software program, or discussion of reports or plans related to the security of any governmental facility, building, or structure, or the safety of persons using such facility, building, or structure. The second closed session, Section 2.23711A1, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, namely, county administrators' annual performance evaluation. Third closed session, Section 2.23711A1, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, namely, the county attorney's annual performance evaluation. And finally, the fourth closed session, Section 2.23711A1, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, namely, appointment to the Western Virginia Water Authority. I would request a second for those four.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Now, the board will recess to the third floor for the four closed sessions, and then later for a certification resolution. And after that, a work session to discuss debt financing for capital projects.